Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the Select Board Finance Committee for Town in Southwick. It's Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. For the Select Board, present myself, Chairman Russell S. Fox, Vice Chairman Dodge Moblin, Jason Perone. Administrator, uh, Carl J. Starnar is not present, but we do have Assistant C A O Nadine Tignone present.
Sir, how are you doing today?
Good, sir.
Good, all right, so your D E from the Finance Committee Chairman, President from each name, Alita de Mary is on her way. If you've been this late, Paul Conley is here, Dave Methie, Dr. Richard Zalowski, Karen De Mayo, Robert.
Correct.
Correct, get it, get it. Sherry Norman is our, um. So, so, yeah, thank you, Sherry. And then it just says accounting staff now. Wow, so here we are, so let me take a, did I make a motion to start the meeting?
I'll accept the motion, start the meeting for the Select Board.
So.
Second, we'll call vote, that's Fox's eye.
Doug Moblin, I.
Jason Perone, I. I will take the motion from the Finance Committee and start it. So, Dr. Zalowski. The doctor made the motion.
Karen, my second.
I'm going with Karen for the second. All those in favor, Joe D D, I. Dr. Zalowski.
Karen De Mayo.
David Mathiak. Paul Conley.
Sherry Norman.
Robert Roger. Well.
And guys, this room, even though it stayed behind us, the acoustics stink, so you just gotta project. Yeah, so that there's not too many von Zoom for the recording, that it'll be heard. Thank you.
I have some quick housekeeping, can I do it real quick?
You do that, I guess.
Okay, so Finance Committee, I just need to reaffirm the minutes, three eleven twenty-three. I just need a motion to reaffirm the minutes, we've already did this, we just, it's housekeeping, I'll do it again. Oh, it's Dr. Zalowski. Doctor made a motion.
Karen De Mayo, second.
Karen, second, all those in favor, Joe D D, I. Doctor. Dr. Zalowski. Thank you.
Karen, bye.
David Mathiak. Paul Conley, I.
Sherry Norman.
Robert Roger.
Okay, we also have minutes from three twenty-five twenty-three, where we discussed everything on the, uh. On the finance. On the budget, sorry about that, so I need a motion, a motion for the doctor.
Karen De Mayo, I.
Karen, second, all those in favor, Joe D D, I. Dr. Zalowski.
Karen De Mayo.
David Mathiak. Paul Conley, I.
Sherry Norman.
Robert Roger. Wanted also for April fourth, same thing, we discussed the articles in front of us. Dr. Zalowski. The doctor again, wow. It's doing good.
So you take the minutes from April.
From three eleven to three twenty-five.
Yeah.
Then April fourth I have.
April fourth was the meeting day, so.
Oh, we're all set, folks, that's it, so we got, sir, before yours.
Uh, we took a motion last night, I just wanna reaffirm it, um. But I'm gonna let the floor over to you to explain.
On the two motions.
Right.
Okay, last night, a little uncharacteristic, because we were short a person, so I wanted to bring this back in front of the full board, the Select Board tonight, to reaffirm a vote that we took last night. Um, and because they were related to budgetary issues for this meeting, so we moved forward, but I figured it appropriate to make sure that we had, um, the full Select Board, um. Looking at this issue, the first was, I made a motion to allocate nine hundred thousand dollars from remaining ARPA funds to be allocated to the high, municipal high-speed internet project. And the second was to propose a borrowing authorization up to three million dollars, subject to approval at town meeting of the second reading or second warrant article to form the municipal light plant and to start off the internet, high-speed internet project, so those. That article would come in front of the Finance Committee for recommendation, so it's gonna be discussed tonight. But I wanted to bring those back in front of this meeting tonight, for the Select Board's all, once again, I would take it one at a time. When it's, uh, I would, uh, make a motion to reaffirm, uh, the Select Board action of April tenth, to allocate nine hundred thousand dollars of the remaining ARPA funds, um, to the municipal fiber project.
What would you say? You could second, I will second that, okay, we'll call vote, West Fox, I.
Doug Moblin, I.
Jason Perone, I. Okay, next motion.
And the second is a, uh, motion to reaffirm the Select Board action of April tenth and, and to revoke, um. To put forth the warrant article to borrow three, uh, a warrant for a borrowing authorization for up to three million dollars for the municipal high-speed internet project.
Oh, right, we got a motion.
Sounds like in that, okay.
Sorry about that. West Fox, I.
Doug Moblin, I.
Jason Perone, I.
Fantastic, thank you, we usually don't vote on, on significant articles like that when we're short a person, we try to have the whole board, so I want. Correct, but I, it, thank you for, uh, for ass- voting with us, I appreciate it, thank you.
And I'll, I'll focus on the times.
All right, hold on, someone's pointing. Wow. Hey, can you just click back and get that screen? Thank you.
Thank you. As we started.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, yeah, thank you.
So, how do you wanna do this? Well, first of all, just wanted to say a few things, I was told my mom shot. So, which I agree with. So, can you remove it? So this is what the Finance Committee does, this is what's on our website, we have a lot of hours into this meeting tonight, and I just wanna make sure we understand this, I've incited. Mr. Fox, still getting ready lately. Uh, just moving on here, but. So, this, you know, by the way you're saying, we're in the room, don't forget us. Okay, how would you like to do it, Mr. Fox?
Let's, let's start, uh, Laura, which, which page do you wanna start?
Yes.
Do you wanna entertain any public comments or before we open, or is that? Uh, I don't see it on the agenda. I mean, we, we could, you should, okay, is there anyone here in the public comment? If you could please stand and state your name and answer.
Sandy outside, Michael Bro, that wasn't a setup, but are you gonna be projecting the, uh, spreadsheet on this recent, like, chance?
I don't think we were set up for that, are we?
Do we have copies for the audience, should they want them?
Or could you email it to me?
You could do it, I think I can.
Well, I think.
Hmm?
If I'm not in the Zoom.
You could do it that way, too. Any other public comment?
Thank you.
Any on Zoom, public comment?
Uh, I have a public comment.
Absolutely, okay.
Is your last name, no? Thank you, David Methie, at Elko Road, uh, I had the pleasure, uh, of, uh, participating in a write-in last night to, uh, Southwick Police. And in particular, Officer Mike Bridges, so consummate professional, um, he, uh, spent a couple hours with me and showed me off, uh, throughout his department, and, uh, I got a really good sense of what the police department does, and I wanna express my appreciation, I think, uh, that we have a lot of officers like Officer Mike, and we're in pretty good shape, very impressed.
Awesome.
Thank you.
His mom would be so proud right now.
I bet she is.
Yeah.
And she should be.
Absolutely.
He's, uh, he's a good client.
Yeah. All right, Laura, which, which page do you wanna, you passed out several things, which one would you, are you set up to begin?
I was, sorry. Sorry, trying to get in, so I can share my.
Give that, Karen.
Oh.
That's all right, that's the backup recording, we should be okay.
We're okay. I tried, okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to stall the park.
All right, place closes at ten.
Sure does.
Or until someone falls through the room, whichever comes first.
Well.
Everybody's almost.
Technology. Yes.
Does anyone sit up on stage? Did you bring your?
It's actually not bad. Um, you know, you, you can make a little bit more real estate if, uh, it's over on the right of your Excel. You can, oh, up carrot, that you can close that, uh.
I was gonna come get rid of that.
What goes to ribbon up on top? Wait, over on the right.
That's your finance select, can you see the up carrot? I'm just down, down a little bit.
Working low point, just come straight down and get that up.
Sorry. It looks like there's two naps in there, they just get them messed up.
Trying to get this one out of the way right now.
Yeah, so bad. Hold this guy on that slider. Now, for that, remains that, and. I think that's how we all, you can do it, because we've got things, guys. Here's a little bit.
At that slider there.
Well, that would think, yeah. Sorry, this, that's just, yeah.
It's been going.
Yeah, there's one of them, I can hear it.
New position for one. Turn to she, uh, and as she gone. Then we'll follow.
Right, so you're on this.
Yes.
Bigger package.
Bigger package.
All right. So we're, we're working on page one. And Laura, the red ones are the ones where we don't have an agreement, taken.
Red are the new, were some of the new requests, and where it's blank for the Finance Committee.
Okay.
So we just kind of need both columns to come to an agreement.
I mean, technically, you guys handled that side, so we left it blank.
Okay.
We all have the paintings, if you'd like to hear that. But we just didn't wanna overstep, well, we didn't wanna overstep, but we kept and checked that, you guys technically. And there is some differences I have with some of the stuff, and I wanted to.
Okay, so you're at the first line, which is certifications.
Yep.
That's the first red mark.
Yeah.
And the Select Board, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the Select Board had put forth the fifteen hundred dollars requested by, in that for cert, for certifications, this under the administrative office.
Correct, the C A O requested that, as, uh, most people know, he's going to be retiring. Uh, and we are gonna begin the process of, um, recruiting someone to replace him. The new individual coming on will have to obtain certain certifications, procurement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And, and with that, Mr. Fox, are you looking for a line item eventually to fund that new person coming in near the later?
Yes.
I don't see that there.
Uh, Laura, where did we put that?
We haven't had any motions to add it to.
Okay, I thought we covered that the other night, but maybe it was just Carl and I covering it.
Yeah, I don't think it was problems.
Okay.
Like you are.
And it's somewhere for the Dean also.
Right.
Uh, I believe that we had kicked around, uh, a, uh, Mount Joe similar to what we did when, uh, we recruited the fire chief. I believe it was in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar act.
I think it needs to be around twenty-five to thirty, sir. Depending on what time of year you put someone in that position, you're gonna need to define that, so.
No, I'm just talking about the recruiting process.
Oh, the recruiting process, absolutely.
Right, yeah, right, so if, if.
Yep.
If you wanna accept that, we could put that in, uh, put in a line item right here in this first bit.
You guys okay with me having these discussions? Okay, anything, you know, just. Okay, yes, I think you'll find it there.
Okay. Can we go on to, uh, page two?
Well, you can't.
Because the. No, that's fine, so you're okay with that, where there's a bunch of in, oh, you're in agreement on the rest, you're right, thank you.
Okay, going on to page two. Again, certifications, uh.
Yeah, we were fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any problems with benefits, things like that?
Well, clarify, can we refine the benefits, we were fine.
Okay. Increase in minor equipment, so we're going on to page three.
Page. Oh, okay, I'll go back.
Or part time to full-time, is this?
Increase current pay rate staff to eighteen-two. So, if that's what we find, increase my equipment, yes, that's fine, sure, we want to page three.
All right.
I only see my one shot at this, I just, we gotta make it right, guys.
All right.
Got a lot of time into this.
Town clerk, uh, voting flickers, we said no, you said no, so I think we're going on to page four.
Yes.
All right, we're down to conservation salaries, um. What we, uh, came up with is a recommendation that, uh, in, just for a little history on this, Conservation Commission came to the Select Board about, uh, a secretary. We agreed to the secretary, they were gonna pay for that out of their fees that they collect. Now, Mr. McWilliams is a new chairman, he doesn't like that process, he'd like to see it fully funded. We still believe that some of the fees that they collect should go towards that salary, so we came up with kind of a compromise thing. So we're throwing out a compromise, and we'd be open to any discussion from you there.
Uh, I, I, I get where you're coming from on that, I don't think, we, we did it in a different way, our, our, our discussion, not so much on paper, was that we would finance that position, because secretaries do need to get paid, and then we were to take other monies out of that, but like the trash picker for fifteen hundred, we were gonna go back and grab, was, was out of paying on it. Yeah, but then I believe you guys settled like four thousand, that you would do another line item?
We, we put four thousand in an account that would be encumbered for secretary's salary.
Right, and I think we're comfortable with that, at least it's a start.
Right.
And I had lengthy talks with Dave over this, because he does listen to my meetings, our meetings, um, and there is some go, uh, give and take as far as where they think the money should be coming from and what those monies are for.
Right.
I told him, take it up with the Select Board.
Yeah, and just for history, at one particular.
And I recall all that.
They had thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Fees, and it all disappeared.
Um, so we're fine with the four, with new line item for four thousand, we'll pay that.
And the balance will come from that.
It will.
Fees account.
Right.
So that is the grand compromise that was proposed, I think you guys approached it the other way, and we're talking about.
Same thing, yeah, you're starting, we just, right, we still wanna zip toe in there a little bit.
We just want a better accounting of the fees, we want to make sure the fees collected actually.
Right.
Cover some of the expenses.
And in, and in fairness to Mr. McWilliams, his point was that we don't know going into each year what those fees are going to be, could be a slow year, it could be a busy year for the Conservation Commission.
Right.
The secretarial burden really doesn't change all that much meeting over meeting, so this seemed to be a reasonable accommodation based on what their expenditures were, what their reserve transfer requests were to get to the end of this year. So, the four thousand plus what they anticipate, we should be okay.
Agreed, and we maybe took three thousand at a meeting to help with the secretary, was that the number that, uh? We put four thousand, we're fine? No, 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 we had a, a reserve on transfer this year.
Three thousand.
Was three thousand.
Oh, that's, that's who we got to that number.
Right, 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 so. Yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay. And then the fifteen hundred on the trash was, uh, was also, some of that is gonna be, we're trying to put that together so we don't have a person coming in to do uh, conservation land, and a person coming in to do park and rec land. We'll have the same guy do the same run and not have two people come in for at least a minimum four hours. So that's how we got to this number in the budget, if I recall.
Yes, and, and just to clarify, at your meeting, I was simply observing, but you had said that the new employee for the, for the park and rec side would then pick up trash for the conservation side, and that's two separate deals, trash would be picked up, I looked in the, just because you guys did. Um, the trash would be picked up by the town janitorial staff that's here in the building.
Buildings to grounds would be responsible.
Yes.
Monies would just come out, whoever, yeah, we didn't, we didn't pick a guy, it's.
No, I understand that.
Buildings and grounds will be the responsible department.
Correct.
And they're gonna pull the money to fund it.
Right.
From either conservation, um, from the conservation account, or from this fifteen hundred dollar line item under conservation salary.
Which is fine, just the way it was worded at your meeting sounded like, which no one understood, because.
We are not a helping punch.
I understand. You are, I'm doing the best I can to help, I can. There's always so much I can do, you are correct.
All right, okay, let's get down to the meeting, ready?
Porta potties.
I, we said no, because, I mean, depending on who you listen to, it is or isn't allowed.
It, so where the, so where the porta potties would go would be in the parking area, that is allowed under our agreement with Fish and Game and our conservation restriction.
Okay.
Okay, so the idea is, there's an option.
For health issue, you have to do.
Right, the Board of Health wanted it, uh, Fish and Game was okay with it, uh, police and fire supporting the conservation.
Or, as long as we can do a lottery, how many times it gets ticked open is.
I have a question, where is the problem, is the problem in the parking lot? Or is the problem on the so-called beach?
Who, we do not, I'll never use that term.
Harbor.
Shoreline.
Shoreline.
Correct.
That's why I was like, what quote?
The, the problem is on the shoreline.
On the shoreline.
Okay, we cannot put the porta potty down then.
So, defending the money on like a porta potty in the parking lot is not gonna solve the problem?
We, we have been having several meetings with Fish and Game, Conservation, Police, Fire, D P W, because of some of the challenges we faced last year on that part. This was decided that this would be something we would try to see if it would help to alleviate the problem. We're not sure, but we're, we're, we're optimistic, uh, and we're gonna, this is one of the measures that we'd like to take to, uh, to try to alleviate some of the situation that we have there.
Okay, so this would be like a one-year contract, so.
Oh, yeah, it's, this, this isn't one season, right, this is part of the plan along with other measures, security measures, uh, uh, increased patrols, et cetera, um. And right now, uh, we did get a very nice letter from, uh, Fish and Game. Uh, they sent out a letter that, uh, that it's refreshing to have a community working with them because they have other conservation areas with similar problem, but they don't have the support of the community, uh, so that right now, we are on good terms with Fish and Game uh, rather than them coming down on us because of the conservation restriction. And the Conservation Commission are the trustees of that part.
I'm out my soapbox. I, I, yeah, as a safety, a health issue, you have to try it once, right?
Right.
If they don't come up and they don't, they're gonna, someone's going to, that's not an issue, it's just a matter of it helps clean up the issues you're having down.
Right.
I was there yesterday, there was already a dozen cars in a parking lot, yesterday after five o'clock. We had brought them there all last year.
Challenges.
Challenges, okay? Whatever you wanna call that, we had challenges, but and it, and it, it was disheartening to me, because we saw groups of kids, even the Girl Scouts and the Brownies was going down there to pick up trash down on that property. Admirable, but they should not have to be worried about biohazards while they're on that property. I'm hopeful that with this people will at least take the effort to go up to the parking lot rather than ruining pristine town land in the way that it was last year, at least for that part of it, and hopefully with, that will encourage better behavior overall on that property. I think we have to do this for at least this season and prove it out, and say, okay, the excuse last year was, there's no porta potties, no bathrooms, what would you like me to do? Okay, well, now you have an answer, you may have to walk a hundred yards to get there, but, okay, that's under the conservation restriction, indeed restriction, that was agreed to by the Conservation Commission, this is what we have, so this is the best we can do, and here's our effort to do it. I'll get on my soapbox, okay? So, I guess we're asking for your concurrence with that assessment for three thousand, uh, six hundred seventy-five.
Just a quick question, will we have so many tip overs before we just pull it out? If that happens?
If, if, if the port company that does that, if it happens too often, they pull it out.
Oh, it's on that, okay.
I mean, they, they make that decision.
Right, because you don't, they all their next year.
Didn't do it at the rec center.
Yeah.
Just pull them out, you know, they just say, that's it.
And the hope is that doesn't happen, I was, I was being the jerk.
But, no, no, it's, it's.
But that's all part of it.
Fortunately, part of the behavior, if, if, if this helps encourage people to behave better and treat that prop, their property, property respectfully, great, if they don't. Well, I don't know what else.
What about announcements at the high school, when they do their morning thing? They could introduce it and ask people, please don't, you know, do this, do that, so you're throwing the measure out there, so it's being publicized, because don't they, in the high school, don't they do a morning notice thing and announcement?
Been a while. I don't recall.
You know, like, just a way to get it out there, because we know it's kids.
Uh, yeah. I don't, I'm not gonna blame anyone group or anyone, I don't know what was going on down there, so it was, we, we just saw the pictures of the end result of what that property looked like last year, and it was a crying shame.
Yeah.
And I just want everybody to, you know, we, we spent a ton of effort to preserve that land, and I just would like to see it enjoyed by more people respectfully, that's all.
Yep, and the Conservation Commission is, I, I think they're trying very hard, they did an education process, they set up on weekends last year at the end to try to just scourge some of it, to tell people about, hey, take trash in, make sure you're taking the trash out.
Absolutely.
You know, uh, you know, there's facilities over at the boat ramps that you can use, uh, so it's an education process. Uh, I know the local news media is gonna be doing a story on it, so that, uh, we will try to get the word out. And that leads me right into trail cameras.
The only reason we said no was because the, the, not, it was just, we felt it was, um, for six hundred dollars, it would probably be poor quality of choice, there's better stuff out there, and that's where we were coming from, that's where we were, you know, it wasn't a no, it was just.
Yeah, I mean, just.
And I don't know, so.
We, we've had executive sessions concerning security measures, and I don't wanna do it publicly, but there is a plan worked out by the police department and Fish and Game in the utilization of trail cam. I'd like to just.
Add this to the fleet.
Add this to the fleet and just say that, that this is a measure that we'd like to try. It has worked according to Fish and Game in other conservation areas.
And I know hunters and everything, they use them as well.
We, we had a concern about practicality of battery-operated device that would need constant, um, maintenance and battery refreshes, somebody getting on a ladder to do that, which it seemed like it would seem. Maybe that's not correct, but.
It's, it's, again, I, I'd like to tell you, David, but I can't tell you in a public means.
So are you comfortable with the equipment that is being selected for these cams?
We're, with, with the plan that we have, I'm comfortable. The police are comfortable, Fish and Game is comfortable.
Okay. It's cheap land.
Is, is it gonna be aimed at the toilet shower?
I'm not, yeah, I'm so sorry. Not gonna comment.
Okay, just because you gotta be careful on that stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, I think our board is fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're on to page.
Sorry, is mine, stay with the porta potties?
I will try to, um, I think you have to be, are we okay at that for one year?
Yes.
I'm sure we stuck one in your worst place.
Go back to some of the ones that.
Yeah, yeah, we were going to, where?
Yeah.
Okay, Laura, just, if we go too quick, we just stop.
We are.
And say, we need to take a vote or a clear.
Laura, the question's behind us.
Well, it's just that some of the sound reads working.
Well, it reads right through those.
Yeah. We can go back to page one.
Page one.
It's some of the lanes on the news.
All right, hold on. So there.
The south. Just more on, even the Select Board. So, the sound reads for the administrative assistant under the Select Board.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, where they were going.
Well, it's not in red, right, so we, so we read easy.
It's right through, so we got some links to fill in.
Okay, yes, there is links on both sides.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
Formally, when it comes to salaries. Personnel board fills those in.
Yeah.
Uh, especially when we're in contract negotiations with our union. And, and there are, and, uh, so I would suggest, Mr. Chairman. That the personnel board, uh, fill those in. Uh, working with, uh, Carl and the dean, and then we could advise you.
Well, I think at the end we'll be both tasked to finish this process.
Okay.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, I just suggest, Mr. Fox, you do that on a timely manner, because. Said urgency to my current department that this gets.
We, uh. We have a lot of things that we're gonna be accomplishing over the next two weeks. Anything else, Laura, which page?
Sorry, I just wanna see if there are any. Non-salary issues. And I apologize to the audience. Pages we say do not line up once.
Yeah, we're on page one. Yeah, but we did, we did, we did, we did say, okay, let's sort of page. And page three was the voting letters.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are gonna just.
Yeah.
Negotiations happening right now, blah, 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 so if you wanna. Probably do that later.
Yeah. So are we on to page five now, Laura, or you're still checking?
No, of course.
We go with page four, secretary.
Yep.
The porta potty, the trail cam.
Page five?
Page five. Increase two is very good with. Software maintenance here.
I don't see any. They, they stick. Anybody with better eyesight, if you see we're all good on the pages, just yell it out.
No, don't yell it out, let us just pick our two seconds and look through it at least.
No, but I mean, if we're all set. We're all.
You guys have on a whole, are you on page six?
I'm on page six.
So, so we go right, so everything looks good, and so we get to the. Tractor, which is for town hall capital. Yes, oh, we said no. And, um.
All, all right.
You can go first, or I can have my elite go first. You did a great job.
I'm, I'm good, I'll throw this out, I'll throw this out, it's on the other night.
I wasn't listening, I wasn't.
Okay. Each year we do have some debt that's rolling off. And usually we replace that debt with some item. I think this happens to be a, a minor item that would pay off dividends. Uh, the tractor would assist. Now that buildings and grounds has taken over really the maintenance of Wally Park, plus the maintenance of Frifty Park. Uh, there could be different attachments, uh, Chairman Sir Connolly could fill it in on that. Uh, that would help to reduce, uh, hand labor, make things a lot easier. So I would look at this item as something that we could either use some free cash to purchase. Or, uh, make it part of a bonding package with several other items. Uh, as far as the other tractors going, uh, talking about for the cemetery, since we're talking about tractors. I, I would rather see the cemetery commissioners think about leasing a tractor, see if it's feasible. Uh, what their plan is, where they're gonna store, who's gonna take care of the equipment. Uh, we've done this in the past, uh, with our, uh, you know, the whacker. That we bought, we leased it with an option to purchase, uh, to see if it would fit in with the needs of DPW. First year showed us, it saved us a ton of money, worked out, we purchased it, so. I'm done.
We really did lease that?
Yes. We leased it and then.
I believe you gotta give employees the tools to do their job, if you don't give the tools to do their job, then don't criticize the way stuff looks. That's just, so I. I don't think any of us on this board were, neither side were criticizing anything. With the tractor, so, yeah.
And I also had last year. This time, we were going around, we, we felt. That we, both boards felt that Mr. Sutton was proposing. A product that wasn't gonna be sufficient, he was trying to do it unachieved, and we felt it wasn't a good expense.
Right.
In the long run for the town, and we said, come back with a, a better tractor. For this budget cycle, here we are.
The concern I have is it doesn't take into account the operating expenses that are added as a result of the new capital expense. There's fuel, there's maintenance, that thing is not going to go without repairs. Uh, and then in addition to that is, there's only a certain amount of human capital that can. Deal with that, is there gonna be overtime as a result of that? So I just feel like we're not just looking at a tractor. We're looking at the. For lack of a better term, the collateral damage as a result of that capital expense, and I don't think that's taken into consideration.
I think you're right on the, the maintenance base, but certainly it's, it, it's gonna be increased maintenance eventually as it goes out of warranty or whatever, and that will show up.
But we don't know that, it could be year one, we don't know what's going to happen.
Okay. I, I would think that the maintenance in the first year would be minimal.
Most leased vehicles, equipment, um, the shunistu con like them, firms, there's, they're usually maintained under the lease as well as.
But this, this is an acquisition. Did the overtime, we're incurring that overtime right now at Town Hall property when it's snowing. So either we're having contracted operators. Do that snow removal, or. Dave and his crew that are already here for snow removal operations are doing that work. So this will probably reduce that overtime, might projection. On Town Hall, snow removal. Um, but. Does it ever get reduced, it'll probably stay the same.
Right, and something else to replace it, yeah.
Correct, and then if the existing staff at, at Wally Park is gonna use this thing. Or whatever, he's dragging the fields or whatever that needs to be done with this tool. So, I just think, we were proposing it last year. They're back with the better piece of equipment, and that's where I sit on it. I'm sorry, Mr. Doctor Z.
Is there a licensure involved with the operation?
Down to my knowledge, this is a small piece.
Thirty, thirty-four thousand dollars is an inside piece, not a small.
Relatively speaking, I don't think there was license, from what I had seen, there was no licensure.
You know, now you're talking.
You're talking wishy-washy engineers.
Yeah, yeah, I get, I don't believe it's required of this piece.
Yeah, so you're talking used around Town Hall, Wally Park, Rails Trails. Um, and any other sites that were, that they might be needed. As far as, as far as the maintenance and stuff, I mean, that's, that just falls under normal, everyday stuff that they do. Uh, it's something slightly changed, they don't run out, you know, all that stuff's being done in house, these guys are busting their butts to save as much money as they can. So, uh, you know, I don't, it's. It's normal, normal operating expense.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
It's a general sign, where, where you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it sounds like a, a recovering reason, and especially if there's, uh, would they say there's. The roll-off of that, that.
Right, I think we, we have to look at how much debt is rolling on, we gotta look at free cash, and that's normally when we do this. Uh, probably this, if we have the free cash, it'd be, my, my thoughts, do this at the special town meeting. So that we could order the piece of equipment, hopefully get it here by the fall. You know?
Yeah. Well, personally, I could be, you know, I, I, I think I'm swayed to say, uh, that we can get the tractor. The, the cemetery, though, we, uh, talked about that and.
We'll get to that.
Okay.
As we go down, just, just a second.
I, I'm just talking tractors at the time.
Talk about a whole same time.
I just looked at the, here's the tractor, the one that Mr. Sutton proposing. The tractor itself has a twenty-four month warranty on it. The front end rotor, whatever else, that's a twelve month, so. I, I, I think our board's just concerned, like we should be. I don't, I don't think we have an issue with it, it's that we're concerned. So if you guys are okay with it, you're okay with it, I mean, we'll go along with it then.
Okay.
And we will tell you. I mean, I get it, you know, we just, we just look at it. And, and she's right, you know, it's, it's a great piece of equipment, and next you know. You know, the guy's on rail trail for four hours, it's not a piece of equipment to drive up and down rail trails, not, you know. But it's not a piece of equipment, but one piece of brushing. You know what I mean? And you know what I mean?
I, I know. I, I know.
Not opposed to, I just wanna think of the long-term additions to budget. As a result, I just wanna make sure, because that, that's not accounted for whenever we ask for capital items. We're not thinking of the, on the, the long term, and that's all I wanted to do is just voice that.
Right, yeah, right.
Well, it is an investment, right, so we'll, we'll expense it for five years as a capital purchase, and then we'll, I own it for fifteen.
Hopefully fifteen or twenty. Right, but promise to, that we don't have to keep the firing association open to have the tractor. Because I know where we're headed.
Hey, we're on page, uh, six.
I'm here all night. We're good. Did we have the vote? Mr. Chairman, we're just gonna agree to agree.
All right, because we, we will look at that and see whether it's.
So, I can agree, but at the end of the day, when we start looking at real numbers, which probably isn't tonight.
Right.
If the sacrifices have to be made, it's the small stuff like this, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Unless we want to, but, you know.
All right, I'm going on to page seven. Again. Things concerning salaries, we're in a process of collective bargaining, so I'd leave that to the personnel board. Uh, now we're on to, uh, the number of officers.
Thank you for separating that.
Yeah, okay, so we have one new officer that was hired.
Right. So then you're still gonna finance the rest of them.
Right, now Chief Landis is looking for two additional officers.
Correct.
Okay? And what he's. In his mind, the savings from the dispatcher.
Yes.
Now, regional dispatch.
Yes.
That it would be. Replacing that money with officers. Yes, it's a long-term investment, it does, you have benefits, you gotta look, uh, down the road, uh, when they retire. Um.
Our board was okay with this, they had a few questions, and then we got on the ride along, which I'm thrilled they got.
I can answer the questions that you were asking if you want. Yeah, the, the metrics. So, Salwick is nine, according to the, the metrics, nine thousand seven hundred seventy-two, we have four officers. Eighteen, we are at, um, seventy percent per capita, state average eighty percent per capita, national ninety-one. They recommended, well, it's not really so much a recommended as the. Percent, the, the number they used is about two point three officers per thousand person. So that's the FBI's.
Yeah, so this, right, we talked about that last night. Uh, my question was initially about, uh, like, for example, uh, call, you know, call response time.
Right.
Right?
Jason can answer that.
That's, you know, what, what I.
That's dependent upon.
I, I know.
Whatever it did call is. And, and you, with two officers, you know, everybody knows I'm over there, that's where I work. It, it's a different world, with two officers, you can get two guys tied up. And, and since we've had to assist, so, where, depending on where the road is, what is that.
If, if you. A lot of people don't understand, if you're fully staffed for this, of ship, you have, you have two officers, you have a boss, you have to patrol. If the patrolman makes an arrest, boss has to go in with them. Now you got one guy in the street, and that's with three guys.
And if you've only got the two, which they run.
You're in a lot of trouble.
You, they, the officer, sometimes the senior officer acts as the booking officer, so. You get any, any sort of accident, domestic incident, you know, you're in a world of hurt.
Yeah, that's exactly the point, I mean, so my question was about metrics and, and call volumes. Uh, what I found out last night was that the risk with, you know, the situation that they have on each ship and. The amount of overtime, uh, that the, that the staff are volunteering for, and in many cases not volunteering for. Because people are on vacation, there's holidays, and what's that? Uh, it puts the officers at risk for not being adequately staffed on their shifts. And so I think that, that is, you know, uh, totally, you know, um. Uh, appropriate to have, uh, additional staff on your budget, so.
I, I think everybody's probably aware of the police reform has had a huge impact, not just on South, every single community. Especially smaller communities in the town hall of Massachusetts. We don't have reserve officers really anymore.
Right.
Okay, we've lost that, that crutch. Those guys that would come in and help out, uh, like.
Union twenty-four hundred hours of patrol time, we've been all.
Right. We've lost those, we've lost those great guys. You know, uh, because they're not, they can't do it, they just can't do it. Uh, so.
What these, what they're speaking to in this is supplying enough officers. Per ship, nothing else, it's not about response time, it's not anything else, even at that. Even with three people, or three officers, one lost, two, two patrolmen, per three ships. If something happens, you're still down.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Uh. Comes down to dollars and cents. I, you know, I, I've done a rider on, on rocket logs. Some nights you can fall asleep. And some nights I'll help her.
So I'm also. I'm also certain that it's gonna be overtime savings. Uh, that could be calculated, but it's a given that they're going to be, but, uh, you know, one of the things I joked about with Officer Mike last night was. You know, if, if we were a baseball franchise, we'd have a whole team of analysts being able to crunch numbers. And, you know, prove out things, but, you know, nobody really has time to do that, that's, that's.
And, and, and. Trying to project that you're gonna save on overtime never works out, because we got four officers out right now.
Yes.
Four. You know, it's unprecedented, we just had to, we've gotta run a bad luck on top of everything else.
Yeah.
So, the overtime that. With the, the staffing that we're trying to support. And then have those, those, uh, officers out has been hard on the overtime budget. But it, more importantly, it's been hard on the people left.
Correct.
You know, uh, one of the people that is out is on the order-in list, so now you've had to move up the order-in list to four senior people. But the, the younger, newer folk, they, they're already, they, they could almost constantly be ordered in. Subject to whatever their staffing, the contract allows of what their time off required is. They're just getting ordered in after ordered in after ordered in.
And when you've already worked sixty, seventy hours, and you're ordered in. You're not as fresh, you're not as attentive, mistake can be made.
One hundred percent correct, and, and granted, it's unprecedented that I, you know, since. That I can remember that we've been down this number of people for a length of time, but. Um, and Mr. Chairman's right, it's impossible to calculate the overtime savings, because you never know who's gonna. Get hurt, or be out, or go on military, or, or what have you, that's gonna make you, put you back in overtime spot. But if you're staffed with three plus a sergeant on some shifts, and you do go down one person, you do not necessarily have to order in. To get up to full staff, you could run short, and then if something happens, you can order in, but. It's, it's an option available to you.
Right, and those three full-time, uh, equivalents will be, you know, uh, base salary for their forty-hour shifts out of the gate. So right there, there's, there's overtime savings that they're gonna absorb, uh, in their first forty hours.
Right, hundred percent. Just, just a footnote, is, I think we all agree on this. We are putting it for a grant. Okay, possibility. You get the grant, pay seventy-five percent, three years, okay, so.
And it can still happen even if we hire.
Right, even, right, right, even if we're, if we hire them, they still pick up.
Right, even, right, right, even if we're, if we hire them, they still pick up, pick up their tab.
Alright, don't don't sell past the flow, so we're going to the next page.
So both boards are okay?
Page eight. I don't see any. Can we go to page nine?
Okay, uh we've got the fire chief here, so if there's any questions on that, but uh basically Rich, that's uh the increased clerical hours because of paramedic and the billing and all.
payroll, the table's been a big part of it, um but yeah, it's increased after those no way type of opportunities, if you would, um but because we haven't had administrative assistance for a while, there's a lot of backlog and it needs to be attended as well. So some of our record keeping needs to be improved and that's a big part of certainly.
Chairman, any question? Oh, so many, but no, I I mean, I think we were, we we get it. We get it. Yeah, we're fine. Doesn't trip anything. Is there anything else? On page, well, we have put the whole. Yeah, so I did check with the chief on that, we had hold just, it's a basically what they're what they're doing is it's a new software program, right?
Correct, so what's happening in the industry across the board, there's a lot of software companies are being bought up by one very large company. They're reacting to redistribute, unfortunately, they've already kind of had a hook line and sinker. Um and there's fewer and fewer choices, so we've seen a significant decrease in one of the services that we use now. Um literally three thousand, potentially nine thousand dollars. If that would happen, we're not gonna stay with that thought, but that's just too much. But we still have to replace it with something else, so it's still probably a little bit more than three thousand. But we're also looking at scheduling software, um which has been a challenge for us. So one of the components of the scheduling software is to address any requests for overtime, um shift, making sure that the shifts are filled, that they're done fairly, equally, equitably among the staff. Um that takes an awful lot of time for someone just to manage, just covering a little kind of shift staff back. So the savings in hours alone, like buying a software program, it's a part of the six thousand dollars to do that in the actual home. Right, as Deputy Chief, I will tell you, my first three years, I would spend anywhere, spend fifteen hours a week just working on schedule. And it doesn't sound like much, but it is when you're trying to do the time to work with per diem employees, full-time employees. Now, we have full-time employees, but we also supplement with per diem employees as well too. Um but as our staff grows, does it begin for making sure that it's better, we still. We've looked at a lot of software programs, we've found one that's very um compatible, but also quite mindful. Um but it did come with a price tag of thirty thousand dollars, it's still on the lower end of the spectrum for some of the software programs. And as the department grows, this definitely has its back and you grow with it.
And who uses the software, is it you or a clerical?
Uh it can be anybody for the department, it can be whoever. Um right now, we're, the Deputy Chief manages the um the scheduling. Um but it certainly can be uh administrated, it can be, the best part is it's outface, it's the other thing, it's down the phone, so what's the one of the assets? Um so if there is an immediate opening, that's where we run into a problem, trying to distribute, you get that message out that fairly, the immediate opening, we need to cover. Um so that's where it's the phones, but anyway.
Okay, cause I was just asking, cause you're asking for an increase in clerical time, and you're saying if you get this software, it significantly reduces time to breathe up, so I didn't know.
So the clerical duties right now, the first person wouldn't be the scheduling, uh at the State Department, that's not one of the possibilities there. So strictly the end of the day, myself, or if it was an officer, an officer charged on that day, so the deputy's gonna go and make it one night, the weekend, the officer charged to handle it. You can still use it, so basically, it hasn't launched yet, so you put a new criteria to look before, you hit launch, and then populated, there's a meal on the phone. But the big thing with it is to be fair and equitable for all.
So um do do the police have a a sched- separate scheduling software or um EPW perhaps, uh I didn't know, I mean, scheduling is universal, right, and it doesn't specific to uh.
It isn't, though, I think it is specific for.
Any schedule could be helpful, we're twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
Similar to the police, we're on a twenty-four hour rotation. But we also have this requirement, which is the state needs to be met in a level of paramedic bond versus the basic provider. So it would be one way to look at it, is if they need to replace a sergeant, they can really go up and sergeant, and then they'll be not a great hire. We don't have that logic, it's paramedic, have to be a paramedic.
Yeah.
And there's nowhere around that.
So I say it's kind of niche, too, it's a niche software program, you don't have a lot of choices, you're saying.
So there's fewer and fewer choices, cause a lot of companies being bought up by these big ones, and so that's what happens. They 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 consolidate what they are out for services, actually have the new ones put down there. This, we put in multiple services, this one, the price went very good, the functionality is very good, is very apparently. Um and one of the components that would be really, really awesome is the payroll side. Eventually, this would produce an interface with users, so that we would even have a little payroll, just all the management right there. So that would be significant in terms of.
Select. Chief, is that IMC or is it something?
I know, completely different.
Oh, yeah. Alright, our our feelings on this?
I think it's a great idea.
I do too.
Yeah, we got three here.
Yeah, we just waited for a reach out, I didn't leave with them, I mean, again, just explain exactly what it was, so we were fine with it.
Okay.
Alright, we're on page ten. So the hold on the fire vehicle utility box, we did some research and in August we used what money Dunleavy, or the selector at the time, used what money Dunleavy would allow out of the ARPA funds. And that box was funded back then, so he's aware of it, the county is aware of it. So that does go away, but then the chief had mentioned, he's got that nice new shiny vehicle in the in the bay, and he's short a little bit of funds when it comes to the graphics, radio, and what am I missing, uh warning, the warning lights.
And would that be covered by, by five thousand dollars?
It would, but I believe, did you pull a P O for some of this already?
Um that, no, uh well.
You're talking to the.
Yes, and no. So this is the top of the truck, this is the last, I.
I like tractors.
So it's.
Sorry, time.
We've made a purchase for the truck, the truck was estimated to be uh about thirty-nine thousand dollars, it came in higher than that. So the ARPA lending was offset for two parts of the truck. The truck has a commercial cap on the back, so it's a pickup truck with a cap, that was rolled in the price tag of the pickup truck. At the same time, we've requested funding for a second cap on an existing pickup truck that we have right now, okay? So there was an increase in the ARPA funding from the town to cover the possible pickup truck that the captain came, which we'll just refer to as the Chevy, okay? But one truck, brand new to the net. The other one is a red Chevy, okay, it's an older truck, it's a ninety-three uh diesel pickup truck. Very reliable, it's not going anywhere, we wanted to purchase a cap for that. However, we realized that we probably can't have the cap and decal, warning lights and radios in the other truck. So the money that is appropriated for the cap on the old pickup, we like to just shift it over and use it on the the new truck, the new Chevy. So that's what has to happen, and that's.
Um so so boss, the ARPA funds actually over seventeen thousand for that cap. Um the red truck.
Oh, always.
Yes, so when you check with accounting, that is funded completely.
Okay.
So this five thousand, between the new really doesn't exist, cause you don't need a cap. But you would like it used towards a few other new items, if we're talking about.
Right.
But you did cut a P O for graphics already for that one truck.
Um that would be only one decal?
Okay.
But that could, that may come out, I don't think you can.
Yeah.
Do not worry. No, no, very good, yeah, so we have purchased from the ambulance manufacturer a door decal.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, so we're trying to keep those consistent, so it's not fires, it's recognizable emblem, if you would, um from a company called Specialty Vehicles. So those we purchased, yes, we need those either way, yeah, yeah.
So Mister Fox, my only suggestion is I would try to maneuver if we do this to put under, as you say, free cash, so it can be done sooner than later. But I would hate that way truck to sit there and so.
Okay.
Till I first.
Then we're. Was just five thousand. How you determine where the funding comes from?
Yes, sir.
Done, agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense to all of you?
Makes sense today.
Thank you, Chief. You're a great starter.
Well, let's put a star next to that.
Yeah, just so we can figure out where we don't hold that up. Makes sense?
Yeah. Okay. The next is uh the remodeling.
Remodeling.
And we put in a ten thousand dollar recommendation for design only.
Yeah, we we knew round and round with this, I I was honestly at a higher number for remodeling and by the time my board got done, it would be we we were just at, that doesn't remember that, now that it doesn't make sense to do, we need to do it, just the numbers. The numbers just didn't play out right from the original number to what it was dropped down to. It it definitely needs somebody to go in there and give them a real quote of what he really needs, that has to happen. And I think we're okay with that, yeah.
But we just didn't know that, yeah.
Yeah. That part we were okay with, we just weren't gonna.
That's what, that's how we looked at it too, that, you know, numbers were going back and forth.
Right.
Let's let's.
Too soon, too quick to just.
Let's get a design.
Is that a real number, though, do we know, it's ten thousand dollars?
No, but. It might be.
Dave Sutton and I had talked about uh a a two broad approaches to it, I mean, one was, both of these are renovating existing space, it was just a matter of what space to renovate. One of them, although, would make the bunk room construction easier, and then relocating and then logging, which is a bit of a task. So he said, let's look at the different alternatives, so we've worked on Warland, uh an alternative that really works. We looked at what's referred to as a dog and fork, which is in the disease that's um for estimated construction, and based on the scope of work, the price tag was already a hundred fifty dollars a square foot. Now, the hundred fifty dollars a square foot is if you were to take a space that has nothing in it and renovate. So we have some construction that involves demolition. One of the bigger elements of this is what's referred to as station alerting, which if you would, would be how the fire staff are are toned out during the day, they know it's going. That is quite a big feature of mine, which is the big selling point of this as well. We have a grant of thirty thousand for that available to us, but the cost of the most reputable and uh applicable system is about sixty thousand, okay? Um those are starting to come down as well, too, as they become more and more popular, price is coming down, usability of the function of it is improved, so there's a plus there. So when you look at the square footed price of what we're looking at, the price of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, in my estimate, is pretty close, but it does include the station alerting, we have the thirty-seven dollars. Re- starting edge. So actually, the cost of it can would be less than the one seventy-four, but I agree to getting a big quote from a design consultant, architect, engineer, however we have to go about it, certainly will give us a baseline that's a little bit more practical and probably a little bit more realistic. I don't know how close or how far off it'd be, but I spent twenty years in the trades and I'm like, it's pretty close to letting it go.
That all makes sense, and you're very knowledgeable, I'm questioning the ten thousand, is that a real number?
I don't think so.
Because as, as she was saying, if it's demo, we don't, we don't know what's gonna come up when they look at what's being demoed and all of that.
I think the demo, which is very likely, it's mostly ceiling.
Yeah.
Um where we are, relocate a couple of doors, extract some interior walls, but you have things like carpeting, HVAC, uh and fire front, there's a pressure system, it all play into that. The lighting falls too, so there's a fortuitous fall, so if we have thousand, probably give you a very good idea of what the construction costs would be, but I don't know who would be a designer who could go on it.
But the the figure came from the C A L, who has done different projects.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I just wanted to know, is the real.
Carl felt this was a legitimate figure, ten thousand, to achieve what we want to achieve. I like that one for the thing.
I I I was just gonna say.
Mister Snyder goes over spanner, if it comes in at nine, it's nine, but I don't, I'd rather that question there.
I'm I'm with you, just based on what I've seen and in my field, I feel like this is low.
Okay, we're uh we're gonna agree that, no problem.
I'd rather.
So how?
I'd rather have this evaluated correctly.
Grant that you have. Is there a time on that grant?
So they have this committee developed a grant through the many dispatchers, so we can extend that funding here.
Good.
It's just a letter saying we need to extend it, and it's kind of, it's coming from the state annual funding, other than a lot of what's a great is that one.
And I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah.
We don't, so we we allocate fifteen here. You know, we lose out on the thirty because we didn't move on the rest of that, we can delay it a year, that'll get us.
And those fund, those fundings may come down eventually to, now that's like down thirty thousand, but.
But there's also another opportunity this spring, this this summer, to request additional grant, uh grant money from that same, same organization, from nine oh one six seven nine two zero.
And maybe when you have a design for this setup, it might make the gray element that more appealing.
The equipment for the buildings. So the equipment would be covered.
Correct, but when you have the design, with that equipment showing where it'd be, it might get more appealing.
Yeah, so it's just a question of function and and what's really gonna happen next. Um if this is appropriated to get the design, and comes September, we have a variable price, what's the likelihood of getting that funded, uh that?
Yeah, Rich. Other question, if they get that design finished, how would they get that? So this is a reserve fund transfer question, does he come back in front of panels committee saying, hey, look, we we have a real number, very uncomfortable way, that's a hundred and five thousand.
Yeah.
Um do we look at it then, cause we do carry quite a bit in our reserve funds? And the, or is it too much where?
That's probably too much for a reserve fund transfer, so a little town meeting.
I, you know, we, there has been talk that we might need a special town meeting in the fall. Uh yeah, yeah, yeah.
So probably, sir, you are correct.
Yeah, thank you. Honestly, you never know, right, very old to that. Alright. If there's nothing else on ten, we're going to eleven.
Uh no, you forgot uh number ten, but that was.
I think we both. I have a view on your mouth, Mister Fox.
I'm hoping it falls down on its own. Or that it's stolen.
Yeah. What was that?
These are in the door. The building, I I unscrewed the light bulb.
There's no leaks on it, we're good.
If it disappears during the night, I gotta go. We'll have shots.
So where's your salaries, are you guys, right?
What was that, sir?
The assistant director salary, that's you guys.
Yes.
Yeah, we're the assistant director salary, you guys, that's us. Same with L control, and same with uh the L control gang system. Correct, it all falls under you.
Yeah, all falls under person.
Page twelve. Going on to page thirteen. I got a hand, you got a hand up. Thank you.
Well, if you have, all the line items are the same for late management, but finance, commerce.
Oh, yeah.
Sixty fifty, select words fifty fifty, you have to describe this.
We do.
Good one, Alita. Alright, so we could. The numbers are the same.
That's what I'm saying, so I think there's an addition error in the select board, I think there's just.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alita, we guys got a lot, so thanks. Notice our figure was down.
Yeah, that doesn't matter.
Yeah. Page thirteen has the same uh for gas and oil.
Yeah, yeah, gas and oil. Laura has it correct, yeah, she did say there's six items that she left. Laura has it correct, yeah, she did say there's six items that she left there for the. I believe, um.
That's why.
Getting preserved if they.
We're good on thirteen? See, every time I sit good when somebody's not, he's going, I'm.
I just heard, or did I just hear?
No, it's getting worse. This room is terrible. It has something to do with the flames going over there.
Yeah.
Kenny, Kenny seems to think it's a bad ground somewhere up there. I'll ask the hoop guy.
I just couldn't say when I'm doing the even air, I was thinking.
But then somebody said something about the flames going over there.
Those are just in your head.
Are they, were they kind of me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Okay, so I'm.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Paving. Two planes are off too, Laura.
Yeah, fourteen, so paving and infrastructure. Those. Right.
I, I think that, uh, our, our position was that we would wait and see what our numbers were, what our, what's going on on deck, what our free cash number is. Uh, quite frankly, every year Randy asks for three million dollars, we've never given him three million dollars, we still have roads. From last year's money, they'll be, they will this year. You know, so it's, it's. Uh, I, I wish the figure was thirty million. You know, but I, I think we have to wait until we get down and then.
Yeah, we just wanted to put the heat on you guys.
Uh, you don't have to put the heat on me, I had, I would wait, I was grabbed on Easter Sunday about a road and I was told that it's gonna be on the list this year. Or else I wouldn't see another Easter.
Did they buy a bomb?
They did buy flowers.
Halfway there, kid.
So I think it wasn't a bribe and, you know, okay.
Because of Randy, I wanted to increase it to five.
Yes.
Yeah, and we all know the situation.
Right.
Um, and, uh. Every meeting that we dug and I've gone, and Jason's gone to, everybody knows that chapter ninety is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. Not even keeping up with inflation, um, and and even that, it should be close to five hundred million. Two years guarantee each year, so everybody could go up, do their contracts, get the equipment and repair everything. Uh, meaning that you and I attended in Westfield with the M M A, uh, the good mayor of Westfield, I think he made the best comment of any, he got up and said, this is ridiculous, we've got a three billion dollar surplus. Give us the money, let's fix all the roads. I mean, it makes sense, it's, it, I, I don't know, but we have been hounding our legislators for years to increase chapter ninety money. And and now, uh, even the formula for Western Massachusetts is, it just breaks. All the money's going for the T and the Big Dig and, uh, even, you know, anyways, again, I'll get out my cell phone. But I think that once we have firmer numbers, Joe, I think we can come up with a reasonable figure that will.
Understood, Mr. Box.
Increase of the amount of work that the D P W can account for. Be- because, uh, is the legislature. The legislature passes the, uh.
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah. You know how they wanna work, if they wanna give you the two hundred million, but then they're gonna give you a hundred and fifty million in grants, but you have to apply for grants. So we're not, so legislators can come out, have their picture taken, when they give us fifty thousand dollars to do a road.
The one like the officials, I tell you.
It's a whole extended holes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we agree that we should, Mr. Chairman, that that needs to, I, I don't know where the budget's all gonna shake out.
Right.
This needs to be, there would be an increase, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a million dollars somewhere between bill and break, but I will have to see how the budget changes, but this is my opinion, I'm fully supportive of three million.
So we have this young money that's rolling off.
I get it, I understand, and we have to look at the rest of the budget and there may be other sacrificial stuff, but this is about. You know, you know, it might be, uh, another thing where we could use ARCA, like, well, I don't know.
I thought for sure that was coming halfway the other night, but.
I've been talking about that for three years.
But. Well played, Mr. Morgan, I think you did an excellent job.
Well, I've been saying it for three years, so if Peter has said it enough times, it'll actually come true. But, you know, yeah, the last piece on the road is, guys, that, that's a piece of infrastructure or equipment, you treat it like a twenty five year asset, that's why you bond for that money. And and to complete the project, we did it for a couple of years in a row, we used ARCA money and went there in addition to a smaller bond, so the money looks smaller on the budget. Because we allocated some other monies to that, to get north of a million bucks. Um, so this year we don't have that.
We've, we've been bonding about a million dollars every year.
Right, I was explaining to you, three or four years ago, we did a two or three million dollar.
It was three million. It was, it was a while ago.
Yeah, um, okay. It holds on together, but we did a three million dollar bond issue on this, that, and.
And that was you.
To treat the roads.
That was you, yeah.
As.
Been a lot of that.
Yeah, we're bonding this roof on this project, right, it's a million dollars, it's a twenty five year investment.
The roof last year.
Like, we bonded the million dollar roof at the fire department, a great investment, twenty five year investment, hopefully, right, so a road is no different, just a little lower, closer to the ground.
I was on the.
Yeah, but just so everybody understands, right now it's about a million dollars per mile.
Yes.
Okay?
But it was.
Those are more now, like, the bonds, it's three million, you don't get a million, three miles. For full debt, right. But, and then the other piece of this, as part of this paving is to go after some of these roads that are not quite at a point. That they need full depth reclamation, whether we chip seal them, whether we, you know, the crack ceiling is in here too, but others some chip sealing and some other preservation activities, like unrolls, micro sealing, yeah, that's the right word. Like we did, you know, we, we went in Lexington Circle a year or so, that road wasn't ready for repaving, but hopefully that bought us ten or fifteen more years out of that road. Right, so, because that's another, that's, that's a million bucks, it's one mile around Lexington Circle, it's a million bucks right there.
And in that development, that's one of the newer ones.
Correct.
I know, it's all stuff.
Because pine oil is already, they call it alligator out, it's gotta get done, it, it. Lexington Circle, there's still an opportunity to save that roads, pine oil, they already call it, what they call alligators pine or crocodile's pine, once you see those cracks, it's too late, that road's gonna need to be dug up and redone. So, yeah, unfortunate, but that's, that's how it goes, so they're trying to hit some of those roads now that aren't to the point of where we have to do that, and it's shorter money than, than, you know, taking it up and repairing it. All right. Okay. Page fifteen.
So fifteen. Um, one ton pickup, one seventy five. We were at zero, because we really wanted to see that main foot towards the roads. We thought, we also looked at all this type of equipment and said, you know, we've been very good to D P W over the last few years, and I started reinvesting in some of these roads. I think that was our opinion on this, and we kept with the, the one piece there, we do the curves, which we, that's what we can talk on the fall, it's a great investment, but. Overall, we thought that, um, that they've gotten some early these days, including over the last six years, and we would love to see that kind of money put towards that little fields.
My only question on equipment is, let's say we decide not to buy the dump down, okay, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, why not? So you say, well, it's a good option, yeah, okay, that's fine, so anyways, um, if you keep using that piece of equipment. It's, it's over twenty years old, it's pilot junk, it's gonna keep breaking, it could start rolling down a hole. So is the option to just take that piece of equipment off the road, so we don't waste any of our money, and after, you're gonna do a forty, fifty thousand dollar repair. Well, if you're gonna do that, you might as well buy, we would have made the payment on the piece of equipment, so you have to kinda. Wash.
And I don't say, look at that forty or fifty thousand, and I think the best part of that fall is when we do decide this junk, it shows up fine for the time of the following year. With the, with the green spray paint that I'll put a ton of seal on it, right?
Yeah.
And and it, geez, it's okay now, but that's the meat there there.
Yeah. I'm not so sure, I like this new sarcastic, Joey. What? Crass, sarcastic?
It just, it just, but you are right, I think if it was a forty thousand dollar hit, he'd be in front of us tomorrow saying.
I was gonna say.
We're here, we got a problem.
So I'll give you two points on this, and I, I agree, I think that's probably the right move this year. Uh, sorry, Chief, this is before your time, so you're not on this, but we did end up in front of a meeting, I think it was probably ten years ago now. Um, I happened to be at the selectance meeting, and the fire department came in front of the select board for forty plus, maybe it was a hundred thousand dollars to repair. Fire engines, because the frame, the frame was rotten, they needed to have sent all the way back to the Midwest, have a new frame, put on this shiny fire truck, but it had rotted from roots. They did, and we got about ten years of use out of that truck that was just replaced with new engine two, which, by the way, it's now a frontline piece of equipment in Eastern Mass, but that's here right there. The, um, the other piece of it is just to, for, for these delaying of equipment purchases, and I, I agree that that's the right move this year. But this was a good topic that also came up with the fire department when we were looking at buying a new engine two and the ladder truck. When you're in this price brada, and the price increase on these things is averaging about, on the fire engines was worth of eight and a half percent a year on a million bucks, compound interest. The thing gets away from you a cost year over year. Um, so, you know, eight, you know, eight percent on three hundred thousand, add that, wait two years, it's another eight percent on that increase, so. The, the piece of equipment gets just that much more expensive to ride.
Especially looking at like an eighteen, eighteen months time between your, your order and that vehicle showing up. And so you're on like a year and a half to begin with, and then there's the other order stories. Um, I bought a group online, you know, for D P W where they, where they actually had a truck ordered, contracted, and a year down the line, the company called them back and said, hey, sorry, can't do it. Now, now what do you do, so now you're, you know, you're just, you know. This is just saying, I mean, it can, it can turn into a money pit.
Personally, I think the lead times are gonna start to come a little truer than they have been, it's just been unprecedented the last couple of years, I think they're gonna come to us, so we just had the same thing on an ambulance where the, the contractor said. I know we have a signed contract, but we need another ten thousand dollars, and you have no choice, if you don't go for it, and I, I understand the argument, we did it. Maybe just give the ambulance to someone else that we've been waiting for two years for, and it's not due here until a couple more months from now, but, um. That's due to materials pricing of aluminum and stuff like that, but. Just push that in your thought process as we go through it, that three eighteen, maybe that's, you know, eight percent more next year.
No doubt, yeah, I agree. We just looking at those.
I get it, no, I completely agree.
I can think back ten.
No, we, yeah, that's why we put hold on it, you know, again, we're, we're.
And if the numbers look great, then, you know, we can look at that and consider something else on the road.
We did look at, uh, you know, I thought maybe we could look at one piece, if the number's paying.
We just, we get tired of promising people stuff and then end up holding it, so we took this down, so let's look at the roads and, yeah, there's more of that magical dust in the air. That all the is, um, running, uh, then maybe we can do it.
Well. We are gonna be asking our legislators to attack it.
Yep.
For their mark. Uh, we were successful.
We were.
Several years ago.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, hopefully we're due, but now we're competing with over fifty other community, you know.
I am. Understood, move on.
Moving on. So if we're setting on page, what about refuse, please?
We have forty seven and forty nine.
There, what was that?
The bottom.
Yes.
They're at the bottom.
Forty seven or forty seven in Europe.
Yeah.
Uh, the price, it's a contract came in less.
Oh, okay.
So we can change that according. That was with your concern, that was good news, some good news.
Yes.
It's a.
That was a three year contract. Three year contract. So we're making out better than some other communities. We're on to page sixteen.
Math is funky again.
Well. We'll select on that, just. So cemetery salaries are you guys? What was that, the cemetery salary is you guys, right?
Right.
Yeah, personnel. Cemetery capital tractor, let's have that discussion.
Uh, according to the section, uh, that they, they figured that the tractor will pay for itself. I'm not quite sure, that's why I was throwing out the idea for them that they look at leasing for the option to purchase. If it works out, it pays for itself, so I'll send it.
Well, I like that answer better than the last answer you gave. The last answer was, if it, if it didn't make, that was just the lease, which I didn't care for that answer, because they will come out, you can dig a hole with it ahead of time, just to make sure it does do the job.
No, I have to. Right, they're charging enough, that you figure in your labor costs, your maintenance costs.
Right.
Where it's gonna be housed, you know, things of that nature. Um, I, I hate to say it, uh, but the baby boomers, it's our time to go, and.
Mayor, we finally.
Um, talking to the gymna halls, if the director, we're busy. So, if you're gonna go into this business, now is your time to go.
It did say that somebody, I think, working the grandchild had the same piece of equipment that she's looking at, that she could use it to see the, their needs.
Yeah, my understanding is they've offered her bring one down. And. Dig the hole.
I don't wanna knock. I'm not going down there for the. Saying. We always send the newest elected for those, sorry.
Well, once, well. Anyways, back on the farm, um. What are your thoughts, folks? Start with Robert. The price is right.
The price is right, I mean, at least, at least with cemetery admission, they're gonna make it fun, so I'm, I'm more inclined to.
Right, they do have the down board, um, and it, by honestly, should last them twenty years, because forty holes.
Yeah.
A year.
Well, at least.
They're not doing it every day.
Oh, that's what we're doing, but.
Yeah, so.
And they won't have the extra cost of cleaning up, and the other guy, this is driving, he's not supposed to be.
I believe that, um.
I believe they get like five, five to six hundred dollars to do a.
Six.
Single thing, I'm sure you hear, due to math, twenty thousand, twenty five thousand dollars. Um, I think the only thing that, that might be an issue was that you have to consider the size of the vehicle that will fit in the existing building.
Yeah.
Now, if it doesn't fit in the existing building, that's gonna be an issue, because jobs now probably be outside. Okay, so that will be something that might have to be addressed, okay, other than that, within, if it paid for itself.
Yeah.
The fees, or they, I mean, other places get a thousand dollars to upgrade, you get a bargain here in San Diego, so. At five hundred or six hundred, whatever they get, so your family gets bargained, it's really.
Your family gets.
They do, don't they?
Well, it's not you at that point, that's.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay, anyways, but yeah, I, I mean, uh, I always hope things with you, I think it's a smart way to go, because now they vary your rounds, you know, you're not up on the hillside during the weather, they can't get up there. Like, if you're in the section, they got the heater, they can warm the ground up, get you in there, at least you.
They probably sold it.
They drop you, life is good.
Probably sell the sand, I mean, the fact by the bucket, they know they have a bucket that they could put in the.
Oh, as we, well, we could donate to highway park.
We could.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like.
David?
Well, so I'm just confused, are we, uh, being that they, like you said, or they still considering leasing it or try it before you buy?
I, I think me and Mr. Box, we have to look at all those options ahead of time, to figure out what the best program is, right?
But if yes, well, but if. I guess I was throwing out leasing as enough.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
I'll agree with it, but this tractor, just like you're doing, rebuilding graphics, I think, to go, this is one of them.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. I'll, I'll remember that. Olivia?
Yes, I, I agree, I mean, if it pays for itself, I can fully justify it, but if something needs to go, this is.
Maybe say the fee that they need to cover the maintenance.
Close by now.
They've already said, they've already said we're very low.
We are very low, I, I'm fortunate to have purchased all the towns, and we are low. And I know we've said it many times, but they're, they're doing a wonderful job over there, you should drive through sometime, if you want to, but it's come along a long, long way, and they're continued great success at doing what they do between the benches and everything else over there, it's really come along well. And there were some projects that are planned, but it's been not impending, so even do some more stuff. Sir, Parker?
I think the lease is a far better option, because you don't have any service requirements, if it's a lease, they're gonna take care of every single thing on it, you don't have to worry about what breaks or what doesn't work. The fact that it's gonna pay for itself. I think that's a big plus, but I think the big option is the lease, you don't have to worry about anything, right, they totally handle it.
Understood. So kind of that was a head, sir.
So what is the dollar, are we gonna carry a dollar figure here, or you guys are gonna work it out?
We're gonna work it out.
We'll work out. Page seventeen. Let them work.
You guys are gonna handle the union position board out of the fan board, right?
Correct.
So the copy, basically, was if, if the select order approved the one which they did, for their department, of course, then um, the, the scrap will go down to the senior center. Which we all can within the senior center.
All right, so we're on to page eighteen?
Yep.
They've left the library operation. Because it's not our part of the way.
Yeah, operations fall under the select board, as far as rectos. And then we had an issue, you guys release information material, you guys rather, no? Right?
Right.
Okay, let me just give you one second, I did talk to Richard. We asked for additional two thousand, including the number of requests for programming received. The state message to this board library commission requires us to spend ninety percent of our time appropriated in the panel, and informational materials. Nine percent, nineteen percent takes into account salaries, so it does not affect that. Okay, because I wanted to make sure you weren't screwing around with it, but it doesn't, the salary stays care of that.
But the only difference, starting going back to the library.
Yeah, there's one.
And I'm sorry, I don't have these lined up properly is. Yeah, is that select board had decided between the increases in programs and the information of material.
Yeah.
To give them twenty-five hundred dollars for them to figure out how to split it up.
So for five thousand, they give twenty-five, let them allocate amongst those two financials. When we were at five, we were at the five thousand, they were asking for, they're at twenty-five hundred, you're fine, folks. David? If I had that, I'm sorry, doctor, I see D has the same David's doctor. Doctor, yeah, sorry. Are you? David?
Yeah.
We're fine with that. I'm sorry, Richard. They shouldn't have you guys. And the phone system. We're very few days out with that, but it's blank, is that even that?
I think this one, we talked about it, I'm not carrying it forward. For a couple, one, A, where it had some discussion about wireless handsets that they wanted to get versus so that they could walk around the library with it, right, was there further discussion on this with immunity fiber coming in and integrating that into town's phone system? Because right now, police, fire, and town hall are on the same voice system.
Yeah.
Once we get the immunity fiber, at least to the library, which should be low hanging fruit.
Right.
Uh, we could put them on the same network and phone system and stuff. And I'm also meeting with the librarian, uh, library director. Yes, he talked about the issue that she, that the library commissioner raised during the budget hearing.
About the cake?
No, about that, hey, you guys are on your own and the town doesn't care, which isn't true, frankly, they sell cake for their little bike. So I'm gonna meet with her next week.
Okay, so we said, yeah, it does include some wireless handsets, but we also understand the immunity fiber, because that would be the better option, absolutely.
And they, I'm sure there's wireless options available for whatever we have in our existing phone instructor. It's probably four or five years that we replace the one at the police and fire department with a similar system, and when we have years of this, we can, it's all connected, the plan is for a call, you can move within buildings, or that, yeah, it would make sense to integrate the, the library uh, and TPW whenever time comes into that same infrastructure. So that's why we left it off for now.
Yeah.
Every single post system in the world, including where uh, everyone works, it's your search eBay department, because they're all old, and they go out into service, and then eventually you pull it back here.
Right, this is no different. Okay. So it's just. And just.
Way down.
Yeah, right.
Well, they're, they're gonna have to come back next year when they expect, but they just don't wanna carry it this year, it's a, uh, expense, it's a power, but ready for this.
Okay. Our time of maintenance, that's you guys. Free speech, contration, everyone's. What do the square boxes mean, Lauren?
Oh, the square boxes was just delineating the park and rec.
Gotcha. Right. So there's some discrepancies there, well, it's, I think it was a matter of like the first one, eight forty-seven across, there's eight forty-seven across, right, so that's fine. And I did sit down with David. And I honestly think by the time we were done talking, we were both confused. And no disrespect, just, it's, the whole making is, is, is just crazy.
But you have, well, you just hold on, that sort of budget, push, put them through, and then you have the.
We, yeah, we still have each other, right, so. So the second one's fine, the four hundred, they're actually, yeah, they're all fine. We just, the only thing we did question was the um, in the end was the old beach. And we figure out where that money was or wasn't being touched. That wasn't, that wasn't spiking, right, not even fifty. But that's probably under maintenance somewhere else.
They were wanting it once, once at season or some other time, yeah, right, I heard you.
Yeah, the water company now takes care of that area, because they're home station.
Right. So. But they would just go down once a year, and that would be about it.
Right, because it was zero, um, anyways, we're fine with this, yeah. Because it's level funding, if you look at it, right?
Really?
Yeah.
So you're fine with the.
We're fine with the, the mighty of the boxes, thank you. And then old beach expenses goes away, it looks like. Well, we'd spring maintenance one way, right? And these have to stay zero for five years, the wire disappear, right, well? Right. So then reoccur as we go along. And we were fine with the parking rack vandalism being changed. So that won't go away. This is interesting, and then we're fine with the eighty-four sixty, or the, I'll listen to you, because I just said stop, right?
Yeah, you say, you say, you put it every.
Yeah, this whole, this whole page. Yeah, so we're fine with the the two thousand pole, we were fine with the eighty-four sixty pole.
Why didn't he take off the winterized bathroom line, I am? In the twenty-three and twenty-four board, did it?
Because they, we didn't count now. And under the old um, maintenance staff, they subbed that out.
I see, so that's not supplies or whatever it's due, or is that's actual?
That was really, they were checking the same thing. Player time to do it all. But even now, since then, my understanding is TPW got problems, it's moved out somewhere, which would really help them drain everything out moving forward. Yeah. So we're everything in the park and rec operations all the way down to the wifi road for Wally Park. And then our discrepancy is the Wally Park wifi, we were at twelve hundred, and you guys are at six hundred.
We didn't put it at the beach, if I recall. We took the beach out.
Okay, and that covers.
It was, yeah, it was Wally Park, so.
So, so anyway, the discussion here today, TPW was walking, if we get the west side fighter deal, A five will be there. To get over to the Wally area, we, I said to you, you know, the school has, so we said in the school meeting, their whole wifi issue and all that mess, they found this connect with to the hell of the school, and that would be a Wally park, and I thought it's gonna come down there, well, that park is a stone's throw away.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue, yeah, the issue with any of these is, especially at Wally Park, it's the on-premise work, they're getting from the street all the way to that shed where they're gonna want this internet to begin with, and then you have to deget it out around there. But they're, they're doing three things up at Wally Park. They wanna have cameras at Wally Park, they wanna offer wifi to patrons at Wally Park, and they wanna offer uh control of the locks on the restroom, so that the, the restroom's auto lock at midnight or eleven o'clock, if there's no one in the restroom. Um, hopefully, and um.
We can get out of the lock, then we just can get that.
The lock's better, and you know, so even Comcast, you could put Comcast up there now, and incur the monthly expense to get it up there, but it's, it's a big number, because the distance to get.
Yes.
They have to trench where they need to go, fiber's gonna be no different. Um, so they're gonna have to figure that out, so we offered them, you know, we told, I told the cemetery commission, I told the park and rec, they, you know, for now, go buy a, a subscription for a little wifi device, and bring it to the cemetery where they need internet. The residents don't need wifi, okay, I just. Yeah, they need a lot of spite in the office through the winter, while they were doing some work there, and so they can get one of those things, the same thing at Wally Park, for you can provide some level of service up there temporarily, so we keep that up there and do a bigger project, so that's where I gave, I think they got some of this number, and then we cut the beach one, because frankly, it was, yeah. The other things are fucked up, right, are we fine with just Wally Park?
As long as the bathrooms are getting washed, nothing there was.
Well, I don't know if they're at that point yet, because I don't know if they have the money in there to do that.
They don't have money for the latches on, like, some of this.
The camera work's gonna help, and this is the camera work that they're doing up there, some of it is they have to, it's gotta be a visible deterrent, just like these trail cameras are here, we talked about it. At the Norton Pond property, half the value in the cameras, not the camera, it's a package, there's a camera, right? And so they're doing some of this work up at Wally Park too, and, and we're also gonna be much more aggressive going after. If we find out who's a vandal, we're gonna go at it much more aggressively, and it's ridiculous, again, I, I my soapbox is, I can't believe that town residents or, or anyone related to the town would go in there and damage Wally Park after that, you know, the benefactor and the town have spent literally millions of dollars to build this beautiful facility, and then people go in there and just, for no good reason, just wreck it. Norton Pond's so different, Wally Park's so different, I don't get it, it's unconscionable to me, so I, you know, um, I'm hoping that some of these improvements that they're talking about making up there is gonna deter, that's why I've been talking about this, without the winterization, we're spending stupid money every year fixing the bathrooms when they didn't come back online properly, because they weren't winterized properly, and we've been working on getting that procedure down, David seems to have it well in hand now.
I know.
Nope, they're gonna remake said book, they lost the book, but we, we will remake said book. Um, but that factor of vandalism and the wifi, eventually we'll get the immunity fiber out there, they're gonna have to get it unlocked, because it's just gonna be like anyone else, there's gonna be a cost to get it unlocked, um, and to provide, you know, broader wifi coverage, that's a big space to do it, you have to do a mesh network and all this, and.
Doctor?
Nothing, it's just one of the stages, but David, this is new tractor. All we have to do is put a hook on the back of that tractor, which is a very good expense, after us, he pulls online all the way up here, no problem. No problem, pull wire up there, a wire, I've done it before.
Thank you.
Big savings. Big savings.
Last week, and it sounded like we're about two years under that, realistically. Um, so we are fine with the, okay, I'm fine with that, yes, I agree.
Um, I just wanna go back to the increase in Wally Park, you compare supplies, you guys were at zero, and select board has a thousand.
We felt that they could, you know, give an open door policy here at the finance committee, they could come back, and they did, and at that particular time, I believe the funds more still could be in there. For the dirt, they just finally put on a feelers, less wires, that they can get that uh, from the bar committee to get the ten thousand dollars, they get that dirt done, I understand it is done. And there was some left, come out and left, left with a soft call view, and that's another start from over, so we left it, you just took it out and said, and I, if you saw David and said, our door's always open, if you need that thousand. And our opinion too is, once you give someone that, it just doesn't seem to I don't know, every other part of the budget, we say tight, we don't see giving a thousand dollars, and dirt is gonna change all of that. You know, here.
No problem, no problem, no problem.
The door is open, that's reasonable. It's always open. Contract. Beach contracts? Way up top?
Yeah, way up top.
The increased beach contract, if you miss. Well, both at three hundred, right?
Yeah, but the seventy-nine, we had a hole, it was on hold there.
Which one?
The seventy-nine.
Oh, love it.
Yeah.
I wanted that one.
Yeah, because it was moving.
Well, I don't think we could find where you moved five thousand dollars into that under beach contracts, right, that was supposed to be from another so me and Mr. Fox will figure that out.
Okay, that's a quick one.
Yeah, it's there, but so they took it, they took it out of smaller departments.
Yeah.
To put it under beach contracts or kind of maintenance thing.
Yeah.
And I still haven't been able to find what went down by five thousand.
Okay.
We may. We'll definitely look at that. So.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Page twenty. That's the first all-black page, isn't it, you're not wanting to do that?
There's some big red problem, there's some really can't allow.
Or it was.
He just grabbed like that, that door, he, he already incurred that, it is, is what it is.
Does this show us all the debt that made you going on? Can I even take this as Mr. Snyder? Oh yeah, we're not even happy, we're fighting for something. So does this show us our debt will be back there? Not really.
The debt schedules are.
Yes, okay. Actually, we've done with only one, correct? So what next? It's like water project or sewer?
Twenty-two line water? I don't see any uh. Disagreement. The members match up at the bar. Did you, really go to play in Philly?
I was fighting for them, I was so pissed.
Any nothing on that? Why is your discrepancy on the bottom? What it feels good? Twenty-three looks good, right? And you're going to twenty-four sewer? I have a question. In, in every year. We've been carrying a portion of the sewer expenses on the, on the tax rate. Is that accounted for in here somewhere? Well, we must be allocating money from the tax rate to link this budget somewhere and make it work. Where does it go?
We used, the, the two hundred, the last year was twenty-four thousand seventy-four, we. I am made with the city of West Beach.
So it just comes out of the tax base.
But this year, the budget request and a budget approved so far is eleven one twenty-four. So that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollar give or take, more like, more like two hundred thousand dollar deduction in the budget. But that's not gonna reflect the true costs of operating this sewer system. Right, and just even, I wanted to make that. Known, so that we figure that out. As part of the budget process, and you guys can reconcile it, but it needs to. Somewhere, there needs to be a line item to cover that deficit, because we can't carry. The cost of the sewer system on the rate payer, because we don't have enough rate payers. Every time we go and put a project in, it gets shot down. So we've overbuilt based on the number of rate payers, we've been covering that on the tax rate, and we're gonna continue to have to do that, and we make sure we allocate the money to do that.
So we make a note for that, right?
Somewhere, yeah, I just wanna have a two hundred thousand dollar hole in sewer budget at the middle of the year, at least. How come the sewer dollar, grand and all, or we have to increase the, you know, triple the sewer rate, that's not gonna happen, right, so.
So we're only gonna make it over. Hope you park home station upgrades.
We both held on to this, right?
Right, I had one to get the realistic number of what really passed, and then. And after you know, and then I turned, we both, two pages over, and it's also explained on my notice. That was four hundred grand, is that looking for, and there's three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand sitting there? Something like that.
Where? Uh, I'm gonna say Easter one, but it's not. It was from the original Arpa child, yes, correct. The bid came in at five hundred and sixty or five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the last one we did was like two hundred and sixty thousand. So we said, forget it, you know, look, we can, we can put this off, and that's what we did, we pushed it down the road. And now we keep figures because COVID has kind of declined and things have been a little more competitive in that. Industry, so now we're in the, thinking of the four hundred. So would it make sense then if, if the project's five hundred, to put a hundred thousand in this budget? If he's got the three hundred? Do you think, he thinks that the four hundred? You know, is a more accurate shaking than that? Because remember, we only got one of it. So we only allocated three hundred, we voted, the selector vote sets that they're falling into the Arpa money. Uh, was three hundred thousand out of Arpa was allocated to that project, we didn't really go, it's still sitting there, but. If the project's gonna be four hundred grand, so we only would need to carry a hundred thousand in this budget. From, I believe, for him to execute the project.
Okay, so there you go, sir.
Four hundred thousand. This was used to supplement the three hundred. So then it's seven hundred thousand? We said, no, it's six. I, I think that's.
Uh, no, I just, I, he explained it, he, you know, just like this.
Yeah, I think Randy, that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense. We know that it has to be redone, all right, there's no doubt about that, that's a major, I think, mistake. But we were able to turn down the five sixty.
I don't think the five sixty's the right number at all.
It was five sixty or five eighty, we only got one bit of that. But that's the only thing on this page, right? All right, so we're going to the last page. Uh, EMS. And we have the fire chief still here. Is there any question?
Our only questions, if he cleared it up, was over the, the difference in the. Anything else on twenty-nine?
Well, we were, we had a hold on the, yeah, increase in overtime, but we're just gonna try to. See what your thoughts were on that and uh. Oh, you're the main time, right?
Yeah, me and Joe. Yeah, the common mind is, it, it happened, and they, they made serious direct amendments, it was sort of, for all of them. Would, and I'd be discussing with the police department earlier, overtime is overtime. And it's a double-edged sword, you know, the old days, they did it before they went to twenty-four hours. Because there's always a little bit of room between one and the other, and they could go back and forth, and then at the end of the year, it worked. But this year, they got it hard, and it's not everything.
In, in the past, what I'm gonna say, what we did with the police department. Is putting a lower figure, and they always tell you that, and came back to the finance committee, or we started a transfer. You know, because I don't, you can't plan overtime, I don't know. So I'm gonna suggest we do the same thing with the fire department. You know, because it helps the background.
It does.
But don't be surprised when they, in, in the middle of the year going, yeah, we need to do it, we're setting up a budget to do it that way, that's why we have to reserve our time there. Are you telling me that's all? That's everything?
Schools? I did send a new asking for seventy thousand dollars adjustment, and I was told, no. We, I get that. Not happening at that, I don't, we told, no. My pastor, I'm telling, no, I. I did do. And I understand why they said that, but uh. I, I personally disappointed because we sit here in the nickel diamond special to death for, for good reasons, for that, so there's stewards that are annoyed. And we need to do that. And, and I, this is some of the schools that say, I'm not complaining. Guess I'm just venting so far, but, but I just thought they could have come back a little bit. About seven years ago, Doug Mollman and Joe Deedee showed up at a. School committee meeting, dressed like best white meters, and what's the meeting about right here?
It was significant, yes. Yeah, we asked for some money from A and D, and we promised them that we would not be back in front of them for three years. Um, I did mention saying to the chairman of the school committee, a couple of weeks ago, we were at an event, and I said. Hey bud, they shared about Max on A and D. Which is their protect, and said. Your, your A and D is like at max. We, I think we need seventy thousand dollars to make everything go around, and I have her back. We're more aggressive following people back than I am.
You didn't reach out to me. I remember it was in the great, it's my first office. And I guess I'll do, but I used to be four, six, two, two, seven, seven, eight, four, one, three, that was out there, it was saying. And it's always on you, and usually at the two AM, so. Never probably get a quote lead. Could it, you know, or discuss with the change on the floor?
And, school budget, up or down? Cannot change the school budget on the town meeting floor, up or down? You cannot amend this school budget on the county.
So what happened, the, you say no, that, that's that.
But you, you have to have two, three districts in the region have to vote to approve the budget. If Ranville and Tallinn vote to approve the budget. It's approved, even without, even over eighty-six, three, five, seven percent of the budget, that's how the cookie, promise. That's how the budget, and I believe that's how the regional agreement is written.
All right, uh, Kim said. It was that any citizen can. You know, propose a particular line item. Even in the school budget.
Not in the school budget, any other line item in here on the town meeting floor? I mean, Paul was probably there, then they were arguing about Charlie Dunlap, box of bullets, micro account meeting, was like eight dollars. We spent forty minutes on it, then they voted the school budget for double-digit millions brackets, right, but. You can go for any item in this budget on the town meeting floor for explanation, make a motion to amend it. And that's how it goes, so the school budget article goes as an article that's unamendable on the county.
So what concerns? That it, when it goes, because we're. You know, the selectmen and the finance committee, we review it, but we're like. You know, asking their permission to shave something, and they can just say, no, we're gonna do it.
That's correct, there are several, I'm sorry. Reason was to sound romantic, but let me. I did have a conversation with the chairman of the finance committee, because he called me when he got Mr. Dee's weapon. And they. And he told me that they, one of the reasons why they could not do it. Is because they had an increase of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For students going out of district. Since we had our initial meeting with them. So they agreed to eat that additional hundred and twenty thousand. So in essence, they did. So it would have been okay for them to come back in front of us for a hundred and twenty, which they're not. But yet, we can't ask them for seventy off. But they, they felt that they're already keeping another hundred and twenty, so they, they thought they had.
Paying their fair share.
What was that?
The other towns have an increase in children going out of district.
And, and that's. Where can I get it, so I can go over? I'm sorry?
The school, uh, coming, the school budget, is there any where we can get a little bit, go over line?
From the business manager, we had, they had a full-blown presentation in, within the school, when they gave us the line item budget. And in draft order, they came to the. You know, but you can ask them for their budget.
In, in our packets, we do have, in our schools, we have, we have this.
Pay more and more and more, or a declining district, I get that Ranville and Tallinn won't have paying their fair share, but the other community. We pulled down their elementary school for their million dollars. I don't see that sitting on anymore. Our president wants to win out. Our first location has always been this one. Now it's kind of the main one. You're still keeping my kids out. They need to back in the district, you have twelve, fourteen, seven, eleven here, who should be able to teach our fifth and sixth. By the way, that's different. We play with the solid form, we play with the all-inclusive, we have some of the best education for you. And you have to consider, continue to push them away, they stay out, they don't bat, and if they go out for. Some sort of special education, although, learn how to educate is still out, what else can we do to make youngs? Being for our community, be included, be trying to cover all of our teachers, and we not, you're not bringing kids back. We set them up, we leave them out. Kids who are leaving our district are going for, um, okay, so schools, we closed our shop. We closed our special education class of, um, early childhood, we closed our culinary, we closed our targeting, all of those. Technical locations. Entities that are cool are no longer exist. So those kids have to go someplace else to get it. I can guess it's seven years ago, when YOP and ID, they, they care about this. To educate these kids, go for the elements in our community, teach these kids, stay in our community, go out, get their side, some bathroom. And be, be ready to be ran for, or whatever they need to do. That was a thumbs down. So now, we're all walking out of the, but he has a box, and I, why not, because now I'm going to. But these are all having, we have our pizza, we have our. And then the tax here, all three kids coming out, and I'm looking at this last pass, most of those kids are your fellows, aren't working, and I'm already motion. I'm sorry. They're not, they're not, they're not, they're not, they're not.
Your name and record, can I use?
I'm just saying.
Your phone, but your name, please, and address, just, so we have it. Your name and address. Thank you, Jamie.
And, and that's, that's one sided, right? So that's the problem with the, so their meeting, but then. So my issue with the school budget in general is they can say, hey, we, we think we wanna add this program. And we wanna add to the teachers. Just because, uh, we think it's a great idea, we could benefit to it, but there's no. Critical review of that, to say, well, you've got. coaches that aren't teaching, that are teaching credentials, that could be put in that position, or, you know. But there's just no saying, and I, I don't understand how that, that works.
That's just my opinion on that, I think we have an elected school committee representative of Southwick, Tallinn, and Ranville. That that's their job, is from where I sit. We don't have a lot of say in their, but they come to us for the money, right? It's, it's a big number in our budget, right? But. And, but that school committee is the one who's charged with the oversight of. I have a superintendent, and overseeing, and bringing that budget to town meeting within the framework, so. Jean, you're right, you've got some excellent points, but I think the venue to take them up is with, is partially is with the school committee. Gene, you're right, you've got some excellent points, but I think the venue to take them up is with, is partially with the school committee.
Not, if it's the answer time, then, then, you'll never want to get the first or the answer.
So what, I mean, I, I don't want to hijack this meeting here, but I think that's a good discussion to have with the chairman of the school committee as far as. You know, how they run their meeting or how they present certain things or what's the right time, and we've gone around, around with, I've gone around, around with them on. How they did some things during the pandemic with, with Zoom and, you know, written. Questions for, for that, that, that's here or there, but as far as the budget, it. Back to the original question was, the budget for the school is unamendable on the town meeting floor, up or down? That, you don't like one line item, that you gotta take down the whole budget. If, unless you can live with that, but, and I also firmly believe. Getting back to our budget. The time to address something wrong in our budget is not on the town meeting floor, it's too late. Especially when you start talking about people and salaries because there's benefits and maintenance and all kinds of stuff built that get built up in a budget, you can't just say, oh. Get rid of one of those things in brown sky or get rid of this or whatever, because there's other things in the budget that get built up around that. You want to challenge Charlie's box of bullets, okay, that's one thing, but, you know, and it, it always saddens me a little bit to watch through the budget hearings. Except for the library, which was extremely well represented this year. And all of these reconciliation meetings, I didn't look tonight, how many people want to do, I saw the moderator for a minute. And it's just us. For the whole meeting tonight, so the time to ask questions is very budget hearing, question season. And up into this meeting tonight, once we finalize the budget, I get it, people are gonna come and ask questions, but. Town meeting is the place, it's not the place to really.
The town government has to have checks and balances, so you're saying, I, I didn't understand, the school committee, but. To, um, your question, if, what happens if everybody votes it down? Does that mean the school's not funded? They have zero funding?
No, they run, they run a, they run a monthly budget, they take their old budget, divide it by twelve and they get a month, they run a monthly budget. It's happened, we actually got down to the capital budget, I'm, I'm, is that right?
Well, if they divide it by twelve, it's still, use it, it's passed.
But they, they eventually have to come, no, they don't run, they, the new budget, they run that old. And we have, I've seen the, uh, was it the school budget that went down later, I know they took down the capital budget a couple of times. And we had to come back to it special to vote the school's capital.
Because all three communities have their, yeah, yeah. Yeah, then the capital's down. So one community, we kill all in capital.
So in Westfield, I know, and I'm not comparing us to that, just, the mayor is part of the school committee, he's the chair, is there any? Were recourse for a range of us to have, we're on the board?
We, we gave, when we just decided to read the numbers. And going with top. We've kind of stopped the process that we were used to, that we were doing right here with the regular budget. In year, in the, in the past, we would go for line item by line and by line, that's how it was, but when we went through the region. You know, I'm for top. State would make a great offer, we took advantage of it, uh, but. Now, uh, the state hasn't come through with their funding, chapter seventy funding is, is, is archaic. Uh, we were supposed to get a hundred percent transportation, we don't get that. Um, you know, this was supposed to solve a lot of problems, schools getting together and regeling, that was a big point. But, but there's, but now here's. The other side of the coin. We lost some control.
We just, you know, it's like, you know, before.
But, but like Doug said. We will ask school committee people every year. And those are the people you have to grab and, and talk to. And, 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 and have that frank conversation with them. Um, I, I'm sure, I mean, they have, let's face it, over fifty percent of our budget is school budget. There's ways there. It's fine, you know? We need our school committee to do the digging and we need to support them when they aren't doing the digging, uh. And because Southwick does pay eighty six, eighty seven percent of it.
So as a school committee, I mean, I should have the finance committee, I'm, I'm, it's in Florida, so next year. When we authorize the school committee at the by, at the, at the school, we would. And, and you do an excellent job every year. With your discussion with, uh, funding, 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 and actually, we do it in town, and you do a great job. But I think as the finance committee, we're gonna also have that same discussion, we already know. Because somebody had asked me questions on our budget hearings on Saturday, we're gonna be off by six hundred grand next year with the Easter. My close, Esther, Esther funds, right, we already know that was, new program started, yada, 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 six hundred grand.
Yeah, the budget for that next year. What?
The bunny went away.
The bunny went away.
We did.
We attended a meeting after they put their budget together and they presented it to us. Do they?
But they did have more meetings, shame on, I mean, when they came in front of us on that Saturday. Right, we smiled, which we do, no more smiling, that's what we should have said. We want a hundred grand off, sorry.
I think we should be doing that even before, and.
Yes, agree.
My question was gonna be, do they have work sessions that they advertise that we can come to, like?
Absolutely.
This is, this is whole, yeah.
Absolutely, they do, and they, they, they're on the school website. For every time the school committee meets, and they host their meetings months in advance, really, that they have a schedule.
Yeah.
And you can join their meetings and if they have a finance committee breakdown.
Budget there or is it inside working meetings?
They have, it's, it's no different than your meetings, our meetings, they're subject to open meeting law, they are a government entity, just like we are. You guys don't have any separate meetings, you guys do a long, with notice and public and Zoom and. For God's country to come flush, they are no different than ever guests. Right, so from that perspective.
Work session.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
We have to do our due diligence, but just, I mean, also be, I, I, no.
No.
This is like a school committee's job, if you want to be in the audience and we can have some great. Points to bring up that probably more for the greater school committee than direct budget, I'm sure as you have, so. But, I know. But that's how it's doing.
We do.
I, the other, last thing is, is we mentioned it during the budget hearings, it's not six hundred thousand, I think you're way off. The Student Opportunity Act is gonna absolutely decimate a lot of Western and smaller school districts. Eighty percent of all new funding is going in twenty districts in the town, so eighty, oh, sorry, seventeen schools, right? And they take the same amount, pretty much the same pie, they made the pie a little bigger, but they cut the slices different and they're going with seventeen pounds. So as soon as the, at the minimum local contribution rates are gonna continue to rise, way outpacing inflation for us as a, as a regional district. In, in a, with a declining population, it's like a double whammy. That is coming home to us, we saw it five years ago, we told the super five years ago, we, we heard about it at Mass Municipal. We came back, we talked about it, we saw it a little bit last year, we saw it again this year, the Esther funds, Easter, Esther, whatever. Is masking the problem for the last couple of years because it was all this federal dollars flowing around that they used to cover. It's gone next year, it's at least six hundred, I wager it's closer to a million all the way. Other than that, Mrs. Lincoln, how was the play?
The ending was awful. The world goes full. We said our piece, thank you. This could help the conversation.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So disrespect to anybody.
Yeah.
It's, it's what we're tasked to do.
Right.
And that's why they come to us in, in the, during the budget hearings and the finance.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, by the way, I did hear back from Randy, it's seven hundred. It's not four hundred, it's seven hundred, so he wants the four plus the third, right? I don't know.
Right, I don't think he's trying to speak it.
Oh, my goodness, I'm going to sleep.
And why did he turn it down?
Just because you only had the three hundred last night, you didn't have, you didn't have enough money last night.
No, we, we, it was just ridiculous.
Is it gonna get cheaper?
Well, that, yeah, that's.
I mean.
Right, if the funding's available, it's there, I get it, doesn't mean he's gonna spend it.
Right.
But he didn't last time.
Yeah.
We didn't have enough.
Probably not back for a hundred thousand.
Right. Right, because it came in two hundred and change over what we had.
What's next on our agenda, like, you want to do the debt?
Still, went to what?
The, uh, the debt things or, no, we have more.
If they think we.
Positions.
We have the debts of the guy, just to see what's written on it. Right, you want to look at that or that? Is that FYI or this?
Well, all that is telling us what debt is rolling on. You know, so it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's FYI, okay, you know. We need, we need the, um. We need some kind of motion probably for each cohort. To de, to delegate to their chair to reconcile with the other chair. Minor differences aggravation.
It was, oh. Making that a formal vote, I'm just asking, is that, if you're looking for Mr. Chairman of this, like. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I could force a motion to, uh, designate the chair to. Meet with the chair of the finance committee and sort of designated to reconcile the minor discrepancies that remain in the budget.
Second, they call you all, that's right, that's.
Doug Mollman.
Jason, gentlemen, I.
So we just.
Okay, for the motion to, uh, the finance committee chairman, Diddy reconcile those minor issues. It's my board chair.
All right, we going, who's gonna second that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was in favor, Joe Diddy.
We did, we're, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'll find my eye.
Sure.
Robert Roger, all right.
You're giving a motion to a chairman, select. Doug Mollman will make a motion to a chairman.
Jason, for own second, for a couple, or a shot time, Doug Mollman, I, Jason, for own eye.
Motion for the finance.
I'm ready, I'm starting.
Joe Diddy.
Agent Matt D.